Okay, then we will reopen this meeting, moving forward then. Result of the closed session, we went into, entered into, enter a motion to proceed with the purchase agreement subject to a commercial inspection, a commercial appraisal of the property, and also subject to a inspection of the property by a building, by a certified building inspector. And, so the, is there a second to that? Okay, we have a motion and a second to move forward the purchase agreement as outlined in your packets, with those two stipulations, the, again, the commercial appraisal and the building inspection by certified building inspector. Any further discussion or questions?
I think Mike is here, my doc is here, I mean, we want to kind of address him with the analysis of the questions. Is it the time to be here, is it the time to ask the questions?
We actually addressed each point, point by point in the call.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, we discussed every point and, so. Well, two of the biggest concerns are being met with the appraisal and the building inspection. Kyle had provided us with a detailed layout last meeting already, last meeting, on the use of the building. The scale drawing of how it is going to fit into the building with, and.
Was that, was that at the call?
That's part of the closing meeting. Yeah, he had already done that, and all the councilors have either toured the building or have had an opportunity to tour it. Either they have, or they have, haven't taken advantage of it. I said they have, or haven't taken advantage of it, so it's up, it's their choice, it's their choice, so. Okay, any further discussion or questions?
Were we going with the price that was?
That's what we decided this.
Okay.
Yep. And again, this is subject to the price, the purchase agreement price of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Do we counter and share some of these potential expenses? Because they would be interested in that if we were working with the appraisal and the inspection.
Yeah.
Share some of that with us?
Yes, the appraisal, the commercial appraisal is probably going to start at two thousand dollars and up. So we'll get, we'll have that taken care of, and the building inspector is probably going to be in three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars to get that done. So, and we are moving ahead with those two items, approving the.
But Eric's asking, can we have, typically when you sell a property, don't you have to have it appraised? The buyer does? Yeah, but who pays for it? The buyer or the seller? Well, the inspection, yeah, with the appraisal, it's worth the cost.
If the appraisal comes in lower, you have, you have some negotiation power in that, because if somebody else does the same thing, he might be in the same boat if he can do, I mean, somebody who is not.
I guess that'd be my thought too, if the appraisal comes in lower, but now you've got some bargaining power to say, okay.
You can get just as much benefit out of us as we are too.
Right.
We don't set my stake in, you know, like he knows what his time is.
Yeah. That they'd ask pay for half and half, okay.
I guess I might want to split the cost, because I don't want someone else as an appraiser in there going lowballing, because they do do that sometimes.
Well, we'll choose the appraiser and ask for, ask for them to share the cost.
I mean, if I'm selling something, I wouldn't want the buyer's appraiser. Yeah, yeah.
Are we going to ask, I mean, it doesn't hurt to ask.
As far as the inspection, anything that's found in the inspection will be negotiable?
I imagine it would, because we are, we are approving this subject to the inspection, so the inspection coming back with some problems, then we are, we need to address it.
I backed out of my house from that inspection. You just say pending an inspection, and I think you have to deal with it in like a certain amount of time. So then, at this time, can we share the documents that have been provided to the city council to other people that want them? Like the cost comparisons that we've done, and the layout that's been together?
Yeah, I'm sure we can, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sure we can, there's no, there's no, nothing super secret about any of that stuff, so.
And the purchase agreement is set up, and we can add these things to it, because I know that that's not in there, I don't know about the inspection, but for sure the appraisal wasn't in that purchase agreement.
I already talked to Brad today, and we can add them.
We can add them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, we. That can be added fairly easy, so.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we have got the motion to proceed with the purchase agreement, subject to a commercial appraisal, we're asking the cost of that to be split between the buyer and the seller, and also subject to inspection by a certified building inspector, and that cost to be borne by the city. Am I right on that?
If the appraisal comes in low, what do we do then?
Do we come back, come back, that comes back to the city council then? There's nothing that we can do right now.
The appraisal we presented to you. Before the purchase goes through? I would say, yes.
Yeah, once, once the, we get that information back, then I guess we would vote final, on the final purchase agreement, on the final approval.
Okay.
Right now, we're, we're approving it subject to a satisfactory, favorable outcome.
Okay.
Meaning, if it comes back negative, then we are going to talk about some more.
Do we, is there an order of the inspections, or do we want the building inspector to go in first? And then if there is, if there is a problem with that mezzanine, if there's to talk about, if that's going to be such a, if that's going to be such a deal right before we start, we don't go and spend that extra money? Or is that something that's not in our control, or do you care?
I would think that'd be pretty minimal for storage area.
I don't, I don't see that's.
Oh, there's huge concerns that.
It's just an excavator, right? That's all he ever did was excavate?
Yep.
Stored some.
I don't think he stored very much, or physically worked in the facility, it was more or less for storage, winter storage.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, then we'll call the motion in all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. Nikki? It just.
I was just helping.
Oh, helping Lois, okay.
Trying to, you know, could I?
Okay. Four to one. Okay, moving forward, discussion on 2016 city employees' wages. Luann?
Mr. Mayor, council members, council had wanted to meet at the personnel committee to discuss the salary increases for the staff. We'd asked for the salary scale which is attached, the resolution, and then the surrounding hourly rates for public works employees. Council had also expressed an interest in discussing the use of NeoGov for employee performance review. The staff have attached that email from NeoGov representing on the cost of the program, and, well, they're really two separate issues, I guess. The cost to set up that program would be eight hundred and sixty dollars with an annual fee of three hundred and sixty, and then a per employee cost of ninety dollars per year. So I guess first on the salary adjustments, I provided the step scale for you to look at. The performance reviews, we're all fantastic, great performance reviews, and when we have that, then usually people are moved up one step. So then it becomes, it was a dollar four for me, and I think it was sixty-six cents an hour for Lois, is what they were, what the step is in between the two steps.
So where on here are?
And it's kind of hard to tell you where we are, because I'll tell you why it's hard to tell you. We have gotten COLA increases and haven't always gotten step increases. So then we've added the COLAs, as you can see at the bottom, and then.
What is COLA?
Cost of living adjustment.
Okay, got it, I see.
So then, and then we've moved up a step two, so then it, it, we have to go back and re-figure the malls for them. So, I believe that, um, let's go back and look again. I must be at like step three or step four, and Lois is at step four, I think we're both at step four.
So step four being right here, is that, am I right?
Right, right, step four, yeah.
Okay.
If you look at the numbers down below, the oh six, oh seven, and oh eight COLAs.
Oh, I see, okay.
And then there was a step last year too, so. It might even be a step five.
But, so, this one at the bottom?
Mm-hmm.
That's not what you currently are at?
No. Because there was a step given last year instead of a COLA. So I think I'm at like thirty-five, I'm, and I think Lois, I'm at step five, I believe it is. I mean, I don't even know what I made to that, I ain't part of that.
Why are your steps not being given, what's the?
Because you didn't give steps in the past for a few times. So then if you add the COLAs to it, then it puts it in a different place on the step scale.
What made that, what makes that different?
The city council did. So we were given COLA increases of like twenty.
We froze for a couple of years.
For several, and then for four or five years, we didn't even get a raise. But we were given twenty-five cents or fifty cents an hour for a COLA, with no step but a COLA.
Mm-hmm.
And that was it.
But if you get part of a COLA, does that move you closer to a step?
Well, not really, it doesn't, so that's why it's hard to tell you where I am on the step, or either one of us are, because we weren't given COLA, we weren't given step increases consistently than with a COLA, too, so it's.
So you're both closer to step five?
I believe so, yeah. We're in between four and five, I believe.
Okay, with the new raise.
But then with the.
Or currently, without the new raise, okay.
With a normal progression, how, at what point would you reach a step seven?
Well, I suppose, I don't know, so really.
After seven years?
Well, I suppose, yes, but then, if we've been given, if we've been given, yeah, I know. If we've been given, I've been here eleven years now, I'm going on my twelfth year. And so I, yeah, I haven't reached the top of the steps yet, because of the COLAs. And neither Lois has been here thirty, she should have been at step seven, yeah, she should have been at step seven a long time ago. Because we didn't implement this till oh nine either, I believe it was. It was late, we didn't have one before, because we, we didn't have, we only had, you know, a couple of employees, or oh seven it was maybe. This was when the planner was here and the deputy clerk, when we had more employees, it wasn't necessary to do it before. So then, steps weren't always given, the COLAs were, so then what happens to the steps? I mean, I don't know, you get put in between the middle of them all, then do you redo your old step system?
Was that when the job classification was done, in oh five? Wasn't there, the city really wasn't not.
Pay equity.
The pay equity?
No, 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 yeah, yeah.
We had to readjust?
We had to reassign points, because we really hadn't done that either.
Yeah, yeah.
It had never been, had never been really done, so. That's when the personnel committee was formed. And what, and that was its charge, first charge was to be the.
Well, doesn't it say that it's the resolution seven twenty-five oh five?
Yes, it would have been, but I'm glad for that.
I guess I've never understood these, because there is no clear method of how you get the steps up, or step seven. Most cities, they're doing away with the COLAs, and you work towards the steps, so.
The steps will be?
You know, I don't know, I, I heard just lately that Water Town was paying on the cost, or the, the cost of living index, which is below one percent right now. So those guys weren't getting any increases this year, so. And I know the sheriff's department worked six years, and no increases under their contract. So, how does, how does the step system work?
So the steps are not, it's just a yearly, it's just a progression of how the raises will go, as you go from step three to four, for example, but three to four doesn't mean, does not mean year three to year four, it could be year three to year ten.
They're supposed to be based on performance reviews, and then if that's what they're based on, but there were COLAs that were given in between that aren't part of the steps. So then how do you follow them for the steps? Kind of, you know, you need that.
Well, I don't think if you have a, if you have a step system, you're probably not working out the math so much going on, are you? How far, how, you do, how, how well does that work together? I guess my understanding of the step system is you're higher than twenty-one dollars, and step two is whatever, twenty-eight dollars, whatever. You just start moving, you just start moving up the steps, no matter what, as long as you're satisfactory, and you do that progression, and that's why a lot of places don't like the step system, is because mediocre employees still continue to make that much of a raise, while you got your all-star employees getting some raises, which is kind of, you know, a way.
But we haven't necessarily moved up the steps, to my point. Yeah, so, because they, they, we did, we were given COLAs instead of performance step, or step increases.
You want to be going with that?
Well, I guess we were, what was the?
So it says, it says, we're at step, we moved to step five as the wage scale, but it's not going to be that step five, it's going to be the step five plus the COLA increases that we've had. That's what it's going to be.
I think whether it is the council wants to meet, there's a personnel committee to discuss salary increases for city staff, as, as it says in the memo here. So, we need to decide, are we going to give a step increase or a COLA increase? Mess things up again? Um. Oh, stop, stop, stop.
So in the commercial, the personnel committee recommended, what, a dollar fifty?
Uncut, for Kyle, yes, yep.
And then a dollar after he gets that licensure?
The administrative representative recommending two dollars? And then additional dollar after that license?
It's fifty, seventy, fifty. Based on this information that I provided to you, that shows the surrounding communities, and what average of all three positions are at twenty-one ninety-one. Average high is twenty-one ninety-nine, the actual average is twenty-one fifty-four, and the low is twenty-sixty-nine, which is almost, almost twenty-two dollars, it's thirty-one cents short of twenty-two dollars, which is what the three dollars that they'll eventually get, or two dollars, we're putting at that twenty-one.
So what are you at now, Kyle?
Mm-hmm.
And you started at eighteen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen? Oh, that's right, you got a license bump up.
He licensed, right, he's not been given a raise. A raised raise, he's only been given, he's only, the raises he's been given are because he's increased his licensing. That's the only raises that he's been given.
No, we gave him a raise last year. Yep.
I thought that was based on the, because if you started at seventeen, and then once you passed, passed your wire license, you got another dollar, so you were at eighteen.
And then you got a raise.
And then you got another dollar for my school.
And then you got another dollar for your school, so you got nineteen, so you didn't get any raises, raises, you, they were based on your licensing that you. Right, they weren't.
I can't, I.
We went back and looked at the resolution.
I can't imagine that we would have said Kyle's not having a raise. I don't think that's the way, I think he got a raise. But we possibly skipped a licensure, I don't know. Okay, you're at nineteen, right? Thank you.
What kind of percentage is a three dollar raise?
Three dollars on.
If he's at nineteen, what's a, what percentage of a raise? Three dollars, if you give him two now, there's a license coming?
Three dollars.
Fifteen percent. Fifteen point seven, actually.
So what did you say, actual low, actual high, and then actual average meant?
You have it in your.
I'm looking at it, I don't know what it means.
It's the, of all three above, it's the average of the column.
Oh, okay.
So when I looked at sewer and water maintenance workers, their actual low, actual high, and actual average for those communities, and then their maintenance workers, and then the street maintenance worker too, because he does all three of these ways. Then the actual average of all three positions is the very last column.
Average of all three.
Because you know, when you look at sewer water maintenance worker, which he, he does, that's where they're being paid more, it'd be twenty-two fourteen, twenty-two twenty-five, twenty-two sixty-one is the actual average.
After how many years, how many years?
I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know that.
Some of these, some of these guys have been there fifteen, twenty years, Little Coneye, um, Kansas. So, that, that's my biggest problem, is we're talking almost, well, five dollars in three years, increases based on.
But a lot of that's been on Kyle's studying and getting these certificates, increasing his knowledge, so that.
I understand that.
I mean, the, that's, that's, that's a, just like getting a master's degree, you get a bump for that, whether or not it makes you a better teacher or not, but you get a bump for it regardless.
Yep, how many licenses are there?
He can test all the way up to a A for wastewater, he's, he's at the hive now for water, so he can't really go, he can go higher if he wants, but there would be no reason for the city to compensate him for it, because we only need a C is what he has, it's a C.
Okay.
So he can test for a B.
So you have that?
Yeah, the C.
He needs water and wastewater.
And you can go to A, we have to go to A for wastewater, for you to run the wastewater on your own?
He can't just go test for the A.
Oh, right.
Got to work in the plant for three years and a three months.
Oh, okay. So your next sewer license isn't going to come for maybe two years, is it?
I can probably, that's up to my sewer in March.
Yeah, but then after that one?
After that one, it'll be another two years.
So typically, they're going to come every two years, just those bumps, those two dollars.
Then I have a four-year degree, I kind of. I don't work in the private sector, I don't have anything in my career. Fifty percent seems pretty hot, I mean, what, what do you see in the private sector? Is it common to see a fifteen percent increase for somebody that's?
I think, Luann was saying a two dollar raise, you're.
Right, the other dollar is for the licensure, licensure, so really it's ten percent.
Still a, still a, still a million dollars, and I, and I get that.
But it's because you've acquired more skill. And if you were going to, if you were, if you were going to hire someone with the licenses he has, then you'd have to probably start them out at that, anyway. To begin with, you're not going to get anybody to come.
Yeah, that's kind of the missing part of this puzzle here, on all these advantage, or all these workers.
Right.
All these, I think he's worth eight, more than eighteen dollars an hour. It's just the precedent.
He was nineteen.
How are we going to, nineteen, oh, he's worth one thousand.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
But, twenty-three, you would put him way up there. Twenty-two, it would be twenty-two.
But not until March, or April.
Mm-hmm.
Where now he'd be at twenty-one, which is what the, is the average on here, if you look. It's twenty-sixty-nine, twenty-ninety-nine for the average high, the actual average is twenty-one fifty-four. So he wouldn't even be at the actual average of all, when it's twenty-one dollars. He'd still be underpaid the actual average, based on the neighbor, and this was probably, this was done last year, they probably had raises sent, too, so.
Um, I, I'm hearing a dollar fifty or two dollars, we could simply say a dollar seventy-five, an hour raise, and then you're getting, you're going to be testing in March for another. So, if we go to a dollar seventy-five raise of, for the twenty-seventy-five, and in March you end up to twenty-one seventy-five, which is just, add below the average of all three, average high.
And what I like about Kyle is he can do all three of those jobs, and it's not like we have to have one person for every, you know, we're small enough that we can still, he can still manage.
Well, we do have to hire another public works person, right?
Correct. But that wasn't a baby search, he's, I don't know, we haven't even.
And then he'll be in a supervisor position, and it's going to be worth more as well. I, I definitely want to keep the bonus or the something going forward as, to encourage him to keep getting that license. The goal is to get your A's, and then, you know, then you come back and really negotiate how much we're paying you, because at that point, we're saving a lot of money, we don't need Cooper for this.
Yeah, yeah.
And I know you're smart enough to know that, but I'm just letting you know that I, I'm not, I'm for sure don't want to have that go away in the future going forward or whatever. You should always get something for, uh, working so hard to get an A.
You know, I, I agree with that, you know, the dollar for the license increase. If you look at the other steps on here, most of the steps are a dollar or less. You know, so if we give him a dollar increase for the step, and a dollar for the license. No, but I, I understand the personnel, it's at a dollar fifty, to the increase.
I guess I, I would be, I have a dollar seventy-five, uh, seeing what Kyle has done on the check and stuff and cleaning things up, and I think it's, he does a good job. I'm not.
So where does he sit right now on this points thing, on this step thing?
If, you know, all the public systems are leaving even on here, they're starting, starting at nineteen.
Right, now he's at starting, so if we give him the dollar fifty, and then he gets another dollar in March for the first quarter. He's in between two and three?
Three, yeah.
Twenty-one, he's in between three and four. Twenty-one fifty. I'm good with getting him up to step three.
That's to twenty-two.
Getting him to March, he's going one quarter.
You know, you guys, just thinking about previous employees that we've had, we can't afford not to pay him what he's worth, and go back to having what we had in the past.
I don't think that's what we're trying to do.
Well, I think that you have to pay him what he's worth, and he's worth the twenty-one dollars an hour. You look at the, if you look at the wage scale of the surrounding community, he's worth the twenty-one dollars an hour. He could go and, he could start a job anyplace at twenty-one dollars an hour, he's been here three years.
That'd be step three then, right?
Yeah.
Twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two.
And then he'd go up to step five in March.
Yep.
I would hope he just look at it that way, because we're buying new trucks, we're talking about shops, we're talking about spending a lot of money.
This isn't about what he's worth, absolutely not. This isn't about what he's worth, it, absolutely not, but.
We pay, we pay people what they're worth, we pay everybody a lot more.
That's right, yeah, I, I don't like to look at it that way, I don't-
For, for everything he does for the city, he's there-
I don't want you to take that personally, that, that is not what I'm trying to do here.
And if we go back to what we had previously, when we were paying somebody the seventeen dollars an hour that we were, and, and didn't have a fourth of the knowledge that he has, because he's worked in, for cities, he worked for Tonka Bay for years before he, when he was in college. Plus, he has a construction management degree, so, you know.
Well, I, I would make a motion that we offer a dollar fifty, the increase, as recommended by the personnel committee, annoying that, you know, we're giving you an extra dollar if they lift up a license. And then, we need to relook at how we're dealing with steps, and somehow come up with a better process. Hopefully, the next topic of Neo.gov will, will help us, guide us in some way.
At some point, it was, uh, decided that the step system was the ultimate. But, even if you look at the public work steps, they're only increasing like fifty cents an hour, that's not, that's, and everybody else is increasing a buck. Well, the administrator increases a dollar an hour, based on the point.
It's based on, it's based on percentage, not based on a dollar a month.
Is there, is there a motion? Yes. Is there a second to the motion?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have motion and a second now, we can discuss.
Was that only for the public works? Did you include the other two?
Yep.
No, I think we're just addressing, um, the, uh-
So, it's one fifty now, and then another dollar in March?
Yep.
And then we make a, we, we need to make a priority for, to talk about how we're going to, in terms of, you know, pay increases for this next year, and, yeah, it has to be, uh-
I'm, okay, what about, that puts him in between a step three and a step four, but the way you're looking at it, and he's been here three years.
It would be between two or three.
Two in two months? Okay, so, you're going to, you're going to increase him?
Did you start in the December part of the year?
Okay, so, we've got a motion then, uh, to salary increase of a dollar fifty an hour, and, uh, with also the understanding that there'd be another dollar an hour when the next license is achieved. Any further discussion, questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
So, did we also then approve everybody else's, or did that, that we lowered?
Nope, no, it's just-
We're doing that, okay.
Okay, um, let's see, the personnel recommended that the city administrator say move to step five of the wage scale. So, you'd be right here at step five.
So, is that a dollar four increase for you?
Dollar four for-
I think that's what it, for the last-
Three percent, in the last, in the last, I had it, and it was sixty-six percent for Lois.
Yeah, yeah. I'll make a motion to increase those, those positions to a step five.
To step five, is there a second? Okay, most men second to increase the other staff, other employees from step four to step five, or up to, to step five, I should say. Any further discussion or questions? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we're done with that, NeoGov, is that, that's it on this, right?
Yes.
NeoGov, what is NeoGov?
It's something that Eric can ask, and he can look into, that's something that Harbor County uses?
It's a, it's an electronic format for doing employee evaluations, um-
Instead of what we did?
Instead of, yeah, instead of what we're doing, um, you're able to, um, set personal goals, um, you're able to set organizational goals, and, um, it seems like, at least for the sheriff's office, it seems like it's able to, um, track, and I think more of a, kind of a true picture of what's, what the, what the employee's doing.
Hmm, okay.
Where, where they want to be, um, what they're doing to get there, and then on top of that, there's the organizational goals that you can, that we can set as a council, or however, that decides to be done. Uh, it's, it's in a nice format where you can get in at any time, um, if you're here to get it, you can update your goals, and you know where you're at. Um, it seems like a, it seems like a very easy format, um, to, to, um, it just seems a little, you know, our, the way that we've been doing it these times, it's a little arid, and it doesn't really seem to get much feedback from the ability really as to where Luanne wants to be, and what her educational ideas are, and how to give us ideas and tools, to how to get her to where, you know, where she wants to be. And I would probably venture to say that a lot of the times, she may not know what necessarily our goals are, and where we think she's at, you know, on that, that, you know, it's like we talk about field training, um, you know, where you're at in the process is never a surprise, you should always know, you're, you always need to know where you're at with your job, and I think, um, kind of, if we bring some more of that, you know, into it, um, there, there's not surprises.
Was there someone that could come out and talk about it, or so what?
I'm wondering if we can have a conversation.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, that's so-
Should I check into that?
See if, I mean, yeah, it seems like that, you know, and cost, startup costs is, you know, is kind of, is kind of tough.
Mhm.
Um, you know, I think, you know, once that gets done, I think it would be, it would be, it would be a powerful tool, I think it would help us, you know, as, you know, reviewers and decision makers to do that. Um, I would extend, you know, those users to include those, to, you know, city hall staff, and, um, and probably some of our, our other team players, um, fire teams, um, assistant teams, and then anybody else that comes on board, that's, you know.
Like ninety dollars a person, so far?
And then it's so much startup, and then so much initial fee is, and then, and then three hundred and sixty every year, plus the ninety percent.
Well, if we have the, just the three, it's ninety dollars a person, that's how you got the three sixty, right?
And the five hundred dollars setup, including online training, yeah.
So, each time you add an employee, it's another ninety dollars?
Yeah, each year.
Yeah.
Each year.
Yeah.
So, this will take into account steps?
Well, the way, the way the county has, has implemented, from what I understand, not as much our bargaining, but other bargaining, um, you, you rate yourself as a one to five, and then, um, as an overall rating, and then there is a percentage increase tied to that overall rating. So, that's why, you're actually essentially kind of getting rid of that step process, um, when you're, you're working on the performance-based system.
I like it that, that the employee gives themselves a, a rating, and then we can agree on that, you know?
It, it facilitates communication, and at that moment, I mean, you have to sit down and talk about it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I- I, I didn't really like the review process that we did, I, I did.
I, I've never liked it here, the way, the way to do it, it, it seems like it's really one-sided, you know, it's, you know, we get the sheet, and then Luanne comes in and, you know, finds out at the end of the year, what, what people think, and, you know, there's really no room for growth, or, you know, communication, anything.
Well, it, right, it was very one-sided, um, if you could find out, there's some, some, some sort of a presentation, powerpoint, or they could show something, uh-
Just do it, look slide, or hit.
I mean, there's going to be, we couldn't come up with some different forms, I mean, as well, you know, but it, it seems like, in an all-in-all package, it, it seems to be a, a little powerful, maybe, maybe there's, maybe we're too small for that, but-
Yeah, that's, well, I'm, I'm not sure, let's, let's, look into it, that makes, that makes a lot, makes a lot of sense.
Well, not really, yeah.
Okay, so you'll get some information, information on that?
I will, yep.
Okay, good. Anything else? Christmas trees.
What Christmas trees?
Yeah, exactly. Well, with the rainy weather and everything, the GFI outlets are tripping on all of them, and I go up and I reset them, and they trip again, and they come on, and they get only seen them all day, one night, the whole time, so. We, I'm talking to law school, and we're, maybe looking to get some different ones next year, and I've been talking to a person, to replace them via outlets, and they get a covered over, so they have to save lights, and so, so, just so you know, I forgot to put that in my chat before about that.
Those all have GFI outlets on those things? I wonder if they trip.
Yeah, there's no covers on, there are a couple of them, they have covers, and it's, it's, it's flooded with water, like, you're, you're going to have to, like.
Oh, I'm glad you're noticing that. Did anything get set up with Harbor County about the Christmas trees? I see people are starting to throw them on the road.
Yes, that, Saturday, Saturday the night.
Okay, did you put it on the website?
Yes.
Okay, but it's not in the sign?
Yes, it is.
It's on the electronic sign? I saw three signs on it.
And on Facebook, too, on Facebook.
Cool beans.
Okay, any else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make them.
Motion, please.
You can do it, you can do it.
Motion, please, second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.